So I think we're ready, and the Planning Commission will come to order this morning, the meeting, and our first thing is to note who's here. Commissioner Nelson is absent today, and we arranged that with staff. And the other commissioners are all present. And do we have legal notice for all of our items?
Yes, we do.
Great. And do we have a Director's Report today?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Steve Dennecliff, Director of Planning and Building. Couple of items to bring to your attention as far as recent projects. One, the department is working with the county departments, Planning and Building is working with the other county departments, to put together an annual report on the status of the implementation items from the general plan, the Uca Valley area plan, the housing element. And we're going to be, those meetings are beginning tomorrow, and we'll be working on pulling together an annual report for this as soon as possible. We're continuing to work on the formula business restriction concept or community character. We're not certain yet the best reference to use when talking about this, but it's the response and the follow-up to the urgency moratorium that the Board put in place for formula-based businesses, and we're working to try to come up with a longer-term solution to that concern. With regard to marijuana, there was a marijuana summit you may have seen reference to. It was a six-county meeting, and the Chief Planner, Andy Gustafson, and I were able to attend that and hear how the counties in the region are working to comply with the, or prepare for the new state regulation related to medical marijuana. And also on Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors had appointed an ad hoc committee on this topic. It's Supervisors McCowen and Woodhouse. And they rolled out some items for direction from the Board on Tuesday. I think there were something like 20 points. So it sounds like there's a, you know, there's still significant outstanding questions all over the place. They're trying to rough out some sort of a framework on this, and we'll know more most likely by your next Planning Commission meeting. We can continue to keep the Commission informed. So that's my report, available for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Are there any matters from the public? This is the time when the public is invited to speak to us about any items that are not on the agenda, any concerns. I see no one interested in speaking to the Commission on that. So we'll go ahead to our consent calendar, which is the approval of the January 21st, 2016 minutes. And I'm not quite sure how we should proceed. We have...
If there are grammatical edits, you can make the motion to accept them as they are, if you need to discuss anything, pull it off consent.
Okay, so the motion would be to accept the...
To approve consent.
To, I'll move that we accept the consent.
The grammatically correct.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Great. That's a good way to do that. And then we'll go to our regular calendar, which is First Case 6A, R20150003.
Okay. Madam Chairman, and members of the Commission, the item before you is a proposal for rezoning of a property located on North State Street. It is owned by the Conde Yaga California West Company, and the Agent Norman DeVall is here also. It's being proposed for rezone to bring it into consistency with the existing general plan, which is currently, the general plan is currently industrial, the zoning there is currently general commercial. This started over a year ago when the agent had approached me in regards to an expansion, slight expansion of the existing winery that's on the property. And at that time, the agent was informed that since there was a conflict between the general plan designation and the zoning designation that was recommended, they requested rezone, which they have done, and we followed through with it. Primarily, it's just bringing the property in consistency so that they are able to go ahead and do some expansion on the existing winery. An existing winery requires that it be placed under packing and processing winery, which is approved permitted use in the industrial zone, but it is not included in the general commercial zone. So we're moving forward on this. I have a number of minor issues that were brought up in the staff report, and there's one additional issue that was brought up as a key issue, which you have received, I think, today. So I'll discuss that in just a second. Under the existing issues, we're just, key issue number one is dealing with general plan zoning consistency, and through the act that your recommendation to the Board would bring about this consistency of an I-2 consistent with the I general plan designation. Under environmental protection, we're recommending, I mean, we're indicating no additional environmental evaluation being required nor necessary pursuant to Section 15162-A of the California Environmental Quality Act, since the environmental impacts had been evaluated by the environmental impact report prepared for the 2011 Uca Valley Plan, which is part of the general plan. Under number three, the property itself, there's a portion of it that is located within a plan, pardon me, the flood plain, and this map shows the area. It's mainly a portion of the existing vineyards on the property. The existing development is all to the north. Even if they wish to expand sometime into the flood plain, it would be possible with a flood permit hazard report being provided, which is normal with any development within a flood plain. So it's not a major issue. FEMA had contacted us, just bringing it to our attention. We've responded evaluating the property and found that the only flood plain piece that's there in that area would be actually in the creek itself, an area which they have no intention of developing in. Under the current, the number four, which is the key issue that was brought to your attention, I'm just going to read this to you, and we can discuss if you wish to further, but as a, we're recommending that we still move forward with the action, and if there's a concern that comes up later, the Board can discuss it at that time further. So, under the subdivision moratorium, on September 3rd, 2008, the County of Mendocino entered into a settlement agreement, Board Agreement 10-023, referred to as the Copeland Settlement, which required the county to rezonate 24 acres of land to R3 multiple-family residential or MU2 mixed-use general zoning. To count toward the settlement, all rezoned parcels were required to be within, one, a public water and two, a sanitation, public sanitation district, and within 300 feet of existing water and sewer lines. Per stipulation of the settlement agreement, beginning, pardon me, December 14th, 2014, no subdivisions were to occur within the Uca Valley area plan unless the parcels did not meet these criteria and thus could not be rezoned to fulfill the terms of the Copeland Settlement. Keep in mind that the settlement was primarily to allow for additional R3 multifamily zoning designations. That area was expanded, the moratorium area that is, on June 1st, 2015, to include subdivisions countywide. Effective on January 1, 2016, the stipulation again expanded to include rezonings and general plan amendments. As a result, the project is now subject to a moratorium. While the moratorium has yet to be lifted, the county has fulfilled its obligation with a requisite number of acres having been zoned in recent months. In addition, the subject property does not fit the criteria that would qualify it as a candidate for multifamily rezoning. The general plan designation is currently industrial, and while the site does have access to both water and sanitation district, the industrial designation is not compatible to multifamily uses. Given the above circumstances, the rezoning is deemed to be exempt from the requirements of the moratorium. Now, staff has notified the, let's see, the legal services, and we have not heard back from them as yet. If there should be some response to them, we can move that forward with the rezone to the Board. So we're just bringing it to your attention, and it is definitely an issue that needs to be discussed. You can certainly discuss it here, but most likely it's going to be at the Board if there's any issues involved, of which staff doesn't see any issues involved. So with that in mind, staff's recommended motion is that this Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt the proposed rezoning of the subject property from C2 to I2, and making the following findings, that this project to rezon, or this project to rezon the subject property to general industrials, I2, will bring the zoning into consistency with the general plan land use designation of industrial and the Uca Valley area plan use designation of industrial. And we also note under environmental findings that no additional environmental evaluation is required nor necessary pursuant to the sections noted in the findings of California Environmental Quality Act, and since the environmental impacts have already been evaluated by the environment impact report prepared for the 2011 Uca Valley area plan. So that is the recommendation. If there's any questions, please ask, and the agent is here with, I believe, the owners official, too.
I just have one question before we move ahead. In the memo, it says that the general plan description is currently industrial, but it isn't. It's C2, right?
It is.
Currently.
The zoning is C2, but the general plan is industrial, you're right.
Okay. And even in C2, I don't know that multifamily housing would be...
With use permits, but that wouldn't fit either because there were not to be any discretionary permits required for the R3 to take place, or multifamily to take place. That wouldn't fit either.
And maybe you'll have heard something back from the parties involved before this goes to the Board.
If not, we will reach out to them, making sure that, you know, they can get back to us.
That would be my only...
If I may, Andy Gustafson, Chief Planner. Ordinarily, we would have had this review and determination from legal services prior to our meeting today, but given today's action is not actually a decision, rather, it's a recommendation. It is appropriate for this Commission to make a recommendation. We will not schedule the hearing to the Board until we get a affirmative comment from legal services that this project, this rezoning, is exempt or excluded from the moratorium. We hope to get that soon, so we don't anticipate that it would delay our ability to bring this matter before the Board of Supervisors. But we do want to call this to your attention and make sure that it's in the record.
Right. And maybe the entire moratorium will be lifted before...
And that's quite possible. County Council has been working with legal services, and I believe it's a matter of filing that, I don't know what the legal term is, but paperwork to the court for the court to acknowledge that we have fulfilled the 24-acre rezoning requirement, and the terms of the settlement agreement have been met, and this moratorium can be lifted. So it could be literally a moot matter in a week or two.
Okay. Are there any other questions of staff?
First of all, I'd like to disclose that I did meet with the, I believe, property, or the manager of Canandaigua Local, George Phelan. So I just wanted to disclose that. Then I had a couple of other questions on page two. I wondered why the rezon wasn't done by the county when the general plan was approved. And in addition to that, the question, are there other parcels that need to be rezoned?
Okay.
Okay. Mary Lynn, do you want to give...
Well, I think, Andy, you want to say two? Do you want me to speak, Terry? Oh.
If I may, Steve Dennecliff. So at the, when the general plan was adopted, and this is my sort of take on history as an observer from the executive office, so when the general plan was adopted, the fact that there was a discrepancy between some of the land use designations that were put in place and the zonings was seen as an accident or an oversight. And so there was some sort of a bundling by the county and a discounted rate that was given to property owners to bring the zonings into compliance with the new land use designation. When the Uca Valley area plan was adopted, there was very explicit direction by the Board, or discussion by the Board and direction, that these were not to be bundled and handled in the same way that they were with the general plan, that they would come forward individually, one by one. So I can't speak to the reasoning behind that anymore than I just did, but it wasn't an accident at the time. Perhaps it's an item that should be discussed or reconsidered, you know, at this point. But I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, so that, so there could possibly be others coming before us.
We do believe there are other inconsistent, there's other properties that have zoning inconsistent with the land use designation due to the adoption of the Uca Valley area plan.
Okay.
And I think we did know even then that there was going to have to be some rezonings.
Okay, so I guess my next question is, who pays for the rezoning?
The owner, the applicant.
Okay. So why does the applicant have to pay for that when it was really an oversight of the county?
It wasn't an oversight of the county, is sort of the credit. It was, it was a discussion with the general plan. It was, when this situation happened with the general plan, there was a discussion, there were claims that it was an oversight.
Oh.
And so that's why it was handled the way that it was with the general plan. It's my understanding with the Uca Valley area plan, it was not an oversight. So, and to be clear, I'm not defending the action, I'm just explaining what I believe occurred.
I guess I'm a little confused as to why it's up to the applicant. I can understand if they're doing an expansion, which they apparently are in this case, but it doesn't seem like the applicant should be required to pay the cost of that.
And it's my understanding that was a decision made by the Board.
Okay. So I guess the applicant could bring that up to the Board.
Absolutely.
And I have one other question that kind of prompted that, about legal services. Should that be, then, one of our referral agencies that are listed?
They are, but it, and it's really a referral that would only commence or be in effect while we have the moratorium in place. And we just, quite frankly, the way this came forward at the New Year's and having resolved the rezoning at the end of last year, at the end of 2015, had anticipated that this and other matters regarding rezonings, general plan amendments, subdivisions in Uca Valley would no longer be subject to the moratorium. So we, they are, the short answer is during the moratorium, they are a referral agency or entity. It's a little different because we're asking them to actually sign off on some findings that Fred reviewed with you regarding the eligibility or the qualification of this particular site as a candidate site by virtue of it being served by public sewer and water located within 300 feet of both existing sewer and water lines. So this case doesn't qualify on that ground, in addition to the fact that it's already in a general plan zoning where multifamily resident, excuse me, a general plan land use designation where multifamily residential is not permitted.
Okay, thank you.
And if I, if I could just add on to that, what also happened with this particular project is, this project was captured in one of the escalating tiers. So with the subdivision projects, we were referring those out to legal services. This is a general plan amendment that didn't require a legal services amendment or referral until January 1st of 2016, essentially. And what's ironic is by that point, we had complied with the terms of the settlement agreement, we believe, but the stipulation agreement has still not been approved by the judge to, you know, put the whole matter to rest.
Okay, thank you. I had one other comment under the project description on page one, and I don't know that it's that important, but it reads rezon approximately 27.7 acres from C2 to I2 to bring the zoning in compliance with the general plan use designation industrial, and the current C2 zoning would not allow for the expansion of the existing winery, but the proposed I2 zoning permits packing and winery. I wondered if we should add on to that would allow for the expansion at the end of that And maybe I'm reading that wrong.
I think that's a correct edit, because it, that would be, if I were to diagram this sentence, that's like incomplete clause or, yeah, it needs an action of a verb.
So I would like to see that added. Would allow for expansion? That's all I have, thank you.
I wonder if anyone else might remember this. I, just a little clarification to one of Marilyn's question about the rezonings. It seems to me in my memory that, which I can't trust a whole lot anymore, but that there was, for the Uca Valley area plan, many, if not all, of the zoning changes were requested by the owners of the property. And so that's how the owners ended up being back on the property owner, although the Board did consider moving them along at the county's timing and expense for briefly, but, so, and maybe the property owner can answer to that, too, but maybe he doesn't want to, but it's fine. Okay, so any questions? More? Then with the applicant, or the, I'd like to speak?
Madam Chair, good morning. Norman DeVall, on behalf of the property. Pleasure to be here. I think the least said, the better. I appreciate the discussion and the questions that have been asked. The only question I would have that is not relative to the recommendation is how long will that then-pass SEQA review still be valid for those properties that have not come before you for rezoning? But I'll stop my comments there and simply say that we're here for any questions. George Phelan, manager, is here, and we support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Any questions of the agent? Thank you very much, no. Okay, and we'll open it to the public in case there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this application, but seeing no one, we'll close it to the public and take it back to the commissioners. Are there questions, commissioners? Are we ready for a motion?
Sure. I'll make the motion. The Planning Commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed rezoning of the subject property from C2 to I2, making the general plan consistency and environmental findings, and also with the addition of key issue number four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
If we have a motion and a second, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Krueger?
Yes.
Commissioner Holtkamp?
Yes.
Commissioner Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Ogle?
Yes.
Chair Warner?
Yes.
So the rezoning is, the recommendation for rezoning is approved, and we'll hope that the moratorium issue is moot by the time we get to the Board. Okay.
Thank you.
And then we'll move along to our next item, which is matters from staff, and we have the review and discussion of the Planning Commission bylaws and procedures. So, Mary Lynn, do you want to take a seat?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Lynn Hunt, staff. Over the last few months, we've been reviewing the proposed revisions and updates to the Planning Commission bylaws and rules of procedure, and you did see this before you back there, and I want to say it was September of last year. And so going forward, we have had comments from several commissioners. You have several different drafts in front of you. One of them shows comments off to the side. I hope you all have that. I don't know if yours is in color. Mine's in color, okay, so it's in red. And so you will have the different comments from the commissioners, my comments on some of them. Unfortunately, Matt Kudrowski, our county council, has not had time to review these, and I know some of these comments, I think, are more directed towards his review of it, so I don't know if we'll be able to address it today, but I would like to take any further comments today after looking at the changes in red, and any comments that you have, I'm willing to try and address.
It seems to me that most of the changes are things that, formalizing what is already a fact anyway.
Correct. And I did review the Board's bylaws and procedures, so I took some of the changes from there to embellish them. There are some things we did move around, and one of them is the agenda order, you'll notice that. So if you want to go comment by comment, we can do that, or if you have specific comments and we don't...
Yeah, I'm not sure how we'll go. We'll decide, but generally, overall, I would just like to say that I think, you know, it's going to be good to have some formalized language, but one of the things that I, in my opinion, the public and the Commission itself, and hopefully staff as well, have enjoyed about the Planning Commission is that we're a little less formal than the Board. So keeping that in mind for now and future boards, commissions, planning commissions, if we can keep a little bit of that informality into our procedures and rules, I think that's great, but...
I think that speaks to some of your comments. Some of the rules at the end are, that's why I would like Matt to speak to them, they're more legal type of wording, so, and you're right, some of them are very confusing, like, what does that really mean? So yes, I totally get that.
Right. But we may have to have some of those in there, that's...
Exactly.
So commissioners, would you like to just go through each change? Is that an easier way to do it, or just comments in general?
I think probably most of us have read them. Yes, we did get some more papers this morning, but I think that was really to add on to what we had. I'm not really sure we need to go through each one personally, but I did have some questions about some of the comments I thought I had made that I did not see addressed.
Okay.
Well then, Marilyn, would you start?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Get those out of the way.
Page two. Section nine, I, I had a note there explaining...
And which copy are you working from when we say page two?
Oh, good question. I don't know what we would call it. It's the one...
Packet version, strikeout packet version.
Strikeout packet version, thank you again, with the title "Draft Update with Comments 2016." 2016 in red.
And it's the bylaws, not the rules of procedures, but the bylaws, correct?
Correct.
Okay, sorry. Okay. And I apologize, because I thought I had taken your comments and added them, so I...
Well, and you may add...
Well, you sent me that, or we talked about it that one day, so I apologize if I didn't get it.
Under section nine, "The minutes of previous meeting shall be considered to that end, that any corrections, alterations, or additions may be made by the commission." And I had explained by that one, but I don't know, I guess it's pretty self-explanatory. And then, under section 10, I thought from, let's see, I guess it would be item three to the end where it begins, when the item was posted for a prior meeting of the commission occurring not more than five calendar days prior to that date, action is taken on the item and at the prior meeting at which action is taken. I thought we were going to delete that, but that's what I had in my notes, but I could be wrong on that, Marilyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Valenzuela, Deputy County Counsel, so I work with Mr. Kudrowski. And my goal today is to take notes and get back to Matt. He has not had a chance to review these bylaws and regulations, but he will when he gets back. He should be back in the office tomorrow, and we'll take note of that, and I'll advise him as to what your comments are with respect to number three and any other comments.
What I'll do also is I'll do, I'll add the comment in red, like the rest of these comments off to the side, so I can add that, so Matt can review it.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm sorry, overlooked at the top of the page, the first, well, it's the second paragraph, but the first one in red, I think we need another word in there. I think it's "All sections of the commission shall be recorded by audio or visual means or both, and may also be recorded and broadcast," so add the word "be."
Thank you.
Good night.
And this is just probably a legalese thing on page four. Rule number seven, the third paragraph, the last word was supra, which, it may be a legal thing that we can't get around, but I didn't understand what that was, and I think it means cha-- let's see, above.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
So I don't know if we could change that, or if that's a legal thing that has to be supra, and maybe you can address that.
Supra is above, if the commission wants to change it to above. I don't think Matt would have a problem with that, but I'll relay that to him.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
And that, like the word supra, is one thing that I, I'm glad you caught, because I think that's something we could use more common in this for, as long as we meet the legal standard.
I had kind of an issue with rule nine, the last sentence. I'm not even sure that's English. And I'm hoping that counsel could find some plainer way of saying whatever it is that you mean to be saying there.
Which page are we on? Is it page five?
Page five, the last sentence in rule nine. I mean, just not sure what that means.
Pretty wordy, isn't it?
Yeah. And so if there is a plain way to say whatever it is that's meant there, I might understand it.
Right.
My read of this, a motion to rescind is not in order if action has already been taken, which cannot be undone. So it's kind of contradictory...
It doesn't say undone, it says done.
Should say undone.
Cannot be done.
Oh, it should be undone?
Oh, that makes more sense.
That makes quite a bit more sense right there.
Okay, well, that's the way I read it in my mind, so we'll look at that closely, and I'll get back to Matt on that, and he'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else from anybody on the, on the rules or the bylaws? I'd like to make one suggestion if it meets with everybody's consensus. Rule four, the rules of debate, the sentence that's there is fine, and that's, that's common understanding, but I wonder if we could add a little phrase at the end to make it a little more like we really do it, which is, well, so it would say, "When any member is about to speak in debate, he or she shall respectfully address himself or herself to Mr. Chair or Madam Chair as appropriate, and/or receive recognition from the chair to proceed." So that we don't always say Madam Chair, I'd like the floor, or Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair, I'd like to have my turn. Sometimes it's just a recognition with a nod, and it might be nice if we could say that, if that's appropriate.
I guess my only comment with that is, on one hand, we're trying to be a little less legalese and a little bit more relaxed with the commission. That would be my only thing. It seems like it's a little more formal than probably what we've done in the past. I don't have a problem with it, just a comment.
Well, I'm trying to make it less formal, so that the commissioner doesn't have to say Madam Chair. The commissioner can just receive recognition from the chair to proceed.
Oh, so you were changing that?
Adding it.
She's just adding that, or is recognized by the chair, so that...
Oh, okay, okay, fine, great, thank you.
So it could be either. You can certainly get the attention of the chair by...
Throwing something.
But another indication, a recognition, a nod, a verbal eye contact.
So, yeah, great.
That's kind of how we operate.
Commissioner, I was wondering, you know, the board of supervisors uses the, they use the...
Yellow pen.
Yellow pen, and they put it up to be recognized, and maybe, that seems even more so, but I'm wondering too, if maybe by recognizing them, you're, by doing it, just not a nod, but verbally, then it goes into record? Does that, is that important? I don't, I don't know, so, that's just a thought, too.
That is a thought.
It seems to me that indicating to the board the desire, the chair rather, the desire to speak and being recognized, that brings up the main point, which is, it's up to the chair. But all the rest of this stuff is just the form.
We could have Matt, may I?
Mr. Little, Commissioner Little, you may.
You know, for the time that I've been here, anyway, you know, the, the commission has always really been a lot more informal than the, than the board, and there's been more of a free flow of discussion in it, and it, with very rare exception, has it been a problem where, you know, somebody is, you know, extending their remarks beyond or interrupting, or somehow it doesn't add to the, to the nature of the discussion. I would hope that, you know, until such time as, you know, some problem arises, that the commission continue to be more free form, where, you know, people, as, you know, questions come to mind, and they have the opportunity to, you know, to, to get the question out politely and in order, but without making it so formal that by the time you, you get recognized, you forgot what the question is. So, for some of us. So anyway, I just appreciate the more free form that the commission has been able to have, and it has a lot to do with the, with the members that we've had on the commission and their ability to communicate and work amongst themselves, but...
Yes, and the issue of, the question of whether recognition should be on the tape by name is one that maybe we can ask Matt to review. I guess we've sort of, I've been assuming that we can be recognized from the tape by our voices, but maybe that's not...
That's a point I wanted to underscore, is often when, particularly when motions are being made, and it might be that two members of the commission are working out a solution, it can be difficult on the tape if we need to reconstruct the motion to know who the maker was or what. So in that regard, the formality while, in that instance, just recognizing the name is fine. I think that you as chair, or any future chair, can gauge the heat, if you will, of discussion, and have this rule to invoke a level of discreet authority or formality to help to move a conversation forward. But generally, I think Commissioner Little's comment is correct. The group here works really well together and respects the ability of individual members to comment and not interrupt, so the rule is a great backstop when it's needed. I just wanted to add to the comments that I think what's important is when a motion is made, that you can hear the commissioner's name, who made the motion, who made the second. When you have discussion, you may or may not be able to tell by the, from the tape who was making those comments. It would just say, discussion was XYZ, but I think the important part is who made the motion, who made the second. And I think part of the formality of these rules, it's based on Robert's Rules of Order, and if you've ever seen that book, it's very legalese, very formal, and it goes way back hundreds of years. So we'll get these comments to Matt, and I think a lot of the comments made by the commissioners can be adopted, but I'll leave that up to Matt.
One, I didn't know what I would have, which is Adrian knows who made the motion, and we cast our votes in that order, maker of the motion being the last, except for the chair, right? So in fact, it's inherent in the record.
That's true. That's a good point. But I can see that the chair should try to identify. It wouldn't hurt.
No.
It wouldn't hurt. I don't think that would make us too formal, it wouldn't affect our discussions, really. Let's see, I have a note here, let's see if I can figure it out.
Glad I'm not alone.
It's in rule seven, the rules of voting. Second paragraph, "Every member present when a vote is taken by roll call, on any question shall vote unless excused by unanimous consent of all members present, or unless he or she has a conflict of interest as required by law." The conflict of interest, I understand completely, we, I think all have been in meetings when this had to happen, but unless excused by unanimous consent of all members present, I don't know why that would happen. And then, kind of relating to that, back down in one, two, three, the fourth paragraph says, "Any member requesting to be excused from voting may make, when his or her name is called, or immediately after the roll is called and before the result is announced by the secretary, a brief statement of his or her reasons for making such request." And I'm very confused there. Which comes first, the reason for not voting, or does the vote, does the member excuse himself from the vote first? It's just...
Confusing.
The order by which one would excuse, and the reasons for which one would excuse, or do we use the word recuse, or, I don't know what the word is, but excused, let's say since...
Is that, is that something that's in Robert's Rules?
I'd venture to say yes, but I'm not sure. What we'll do is we'll look at these two paragraphs and see where they came from, probably out of Robert's Rules, but there's also an issue that came up in my mind about abstentions, and I haven't worked with this commission, but it looks like you might not be able to abstain on the commission by reading these rules? Are you allowed to abstain?
Yes.
Yes, if you, if you have a conflict...
And if you don't have a conflict.
But my, I guess my comment would be, because of the, the rule 12, where it reverts to Robert's Rules, it might be cleaner if we just delete that, the reference to not voting for no cause, essentially. If we just delete those references and fall back on Robert's Rules, if, if that were to ever occur, which I can't understand why, unless somebody had a conflict, why would they, I mean, a lot of times I'd like to not vote, but, you know, but, but it might be just cleaner if it just, we just relied on Robert's Rules if that instance came up.
It seems to me there was once or maybe twice in my history that a commissioner abstained from voting, not because of some of the illegal parameters of the Brown Act, but because of a personal relationship with somebody that was appearing before the commission, and they were afraid to undo their friendship with a negative vote, and so felt that that was a bias. And I think the reason given was a bias in this case. That seemed appropriate at the time, I remember.
Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest?
It just might not be one of those legal conflicts, like you're within so many feet, or your property's going to be affected.
I guess maybe one thing I could see was if a commissioner felt that the act was illegal some way. There was no conflict, they just felt that what we were doing was not legal, and they didn't want to be a party to that, and so they just reframed from voting. I don't know, you know, I'm sure staff would keep us out of that kind of trouble, but some, some individual commissioner might feel that way, so they'd want to abstain. No conflict, just disagreed with the legality of the motion.
It could be, too. But at any rate, if those two paragraphs, paragraph two and paragraph four, could be looked at and perhaps cleared up, or maybe we don't need it all, that would be great. Then I had one other thought that was kind of an after the fact thing, that maybe, and maybe this is making it too formal, but somewhere if we had it in writing, especially for new commissioners, a sort of a courtesy section, what do you do if you know you're going to be absent? Who do you call? Also contacting staff regarding questions of a staff report. Those are the two things that came to my mind, but we might think of others. But it, you know, that goes beyond Robert's Rules of Order, and I don't know if we want to add another section or not, but...
So I'm wondering if some of that stuff, and you had brought some information back from Sonoma State when you went down, and I was thinking, that stuff to be more incorporated into the planning commissioner's handbook?
As a separate item.
Yeah, so that might work in that section, and I'm, I'm working on that also, so...
Oh, great. Excellent. Oh, good. Okay, well, that answers that question. Great. Okay, anything more on that?
I guess what that kind of brings up, one other question. What about a rule on attendance? Would that be up to the supervisors? I mean, suppose a commissioner, you know, was habitually absent, and the seat was vacant for some period of time. Is that up to the supervisors to...
Gosh, it seems like there's something that speaks to that, and I can't...
Because it would be up to them to, to either remove or appoint, so I guess it would be their, their deal.
I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay, anything else on these two? Then I think we'll send it back to Marilyn and to Matt, and...
So with that, do the other changes that are, you know, underlined, strike out, do all those look acceptable, and with the few changes that we talked about today? Okay.
We're all, we're all nodding.
Being informal, planning commissioners.
Being informal, planning commissioners, we're nodding, yes.
We're nodding through the chair.
We're nodding through the chair. And if, if we think of something more, Marilyn, we'll, we'll contact you.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much. I really appreciate you working on it. It's kind of a difficult thing, maybe never ending, but it's good to get started on it. Okay, any matters from commission?
You know, I, Madam Chair, I, yeah, came up with a question, this is probably really for Steve, but he doesn't need to come back to answer it. I, we can get it answered later, but I watched the, on the internet, the hearing on the, there he is. later, but I watched the, on the internet, the hearing on the, there he is. A question for you. I watched on the internet, the hearing on the marijuana ordinance, and they were talking about use permits and minor use permits and stuff. What do you foresee might come before the commission in regards to potential permitting that might be required under the ordinance?
Well, let me hedge a little bit, if I may, and say that I don't know what's going to come before your commission, but we've been talking about ways that this might work, and as you heard Supervisor Jody was talking about, you know, say an overlay district, and what I've gathered from the summit and from other discussions is that even though the state law, the new medical marijuana state law, talks about marijuana being an agricultural product, the comparison has been made to like timber, and how you can have a natural product that is treated differently than, say, coroner grapes, right? So, it seems to me that a lot of jurisdictions that are working with marijuana are working toward a discretionary permit process, at least for certain caps. I mean, if you look at the state law, they're, they're talking about different tiers, and I think the discussions locally, and I want to just stress again, and I think, you know, no decisions have been made on this, but discussions locally have talked about, you know, maintaining status quo for, for small grows up to 25 plants, and then having certain levels of discretionary permits for grows over that. What I did hear the board talking about, though, was requesting the recommendation from staff, you know, as to what are appropriate zonings, what are appropriate sized parcels, and, you know, one of our supervisors had made a comment that I enjoyed, and it was, it was that, you know, you can, you can drink all the milk that you want, but that not everybody has an expectation that they can have a herd of dairy cows in their, in their backyard in a, in a small residential neighborhood. And so it does seem like there's consensus, local control is going to be necessary, but I need to hedge on, on what your commission might see, because right now, we just don't know.
Thank you. I had a question, I don't know if Steve or Andy, but I, I read or heard that one of the more ugly sites in the Yucaya Valley area plan might be changing, and that's the Fjords parcel. Has it been bought, and might there, that chain link fence come down?
The chain link fence was there last night.
Yeah.
So, all that I know about the Fjords property right now is, we did have people, representatives of a couple of different development companies come in and talk with the department over the last couple of years. The significant name that's been mentioned has been In-N-Out Burger, and we did talk with folks from In-N-Out Burger. We know that the property is in escrow, or we've been told the property is in escrow by the, the real estate agent, but, you know, the escrow process is always sort of a closely held secret, they, nobody, in case a property falls out, the property owner doesn't want to be harmed in, in, you know, future negotiations as far as terms that they had previously agreed to, and so we're, we're kind of in a, in a hold pattern, but it seems likely that something might happen quickly. You know, right now, we don't have anything in hand. We do believe that if there were an In-N-Out type, you know, purchaser, that that's, that use is consistent by right with the zoning, and, and it would just pop up as a, as an approved building permit if they met the, you know, the setbacks, the standards, all the, all the requirements.
Are there design standards in effect yet with the, with the U-VAP that would affect the design of the building?
It's my understanding that design standards, we have an effect for the Yucaya Valley area plan or for mixed-use general development, and I guess I'll look to our planner and planning experts.
Thank you. Steve's correct, and that in this instance, this is C1 property, I believe, so it would not have those standards in place, but our parking requirements would, would apply.
Well, thank you, I was just curious. Is there anything else? Roger.
We received an email from Heidi Morrison in regard to one of the projects that went through the commission in Redwood Valley in regard to the wells, and I was wondering if that was going to come up, is there something we have to do about that, or is a response going to be made, or where are we with that? All I've got's the email message.
A very good question, and I do hope a response has been made, but...
Yes, Andy Gustafson, Chief Planner, the, I think Commissioner Krueger's speaking of the Gitlin subdivision, and a inquiry from a neighbor, asking if there was a limitation on the number of wells that could be drilled on that property, and our response to the neighbor, and I think you were CC'd on that because you were on the original inquiry, was that there is no limit on the number of wells that can be drilled, provided they, each well is permitted by environmental health, nor is there a requirement of the subdivision to limit the number of wells on the property. I think we also discussed in our response that the subdivision itself was approved with one, with a finding that they demonstrated adequate water on the property with one well and its production to serve a single-family dwelling, as is consistent with our development regulations.
So, the department did make a response?
Yes.
Okay, I did not see the response.
Oh, okay.
That's why I brought it up.
I would like to address that as well. Madam Chair?
Yes. Marilyn.
Thank you. I did also, I, I did contact the property owner, and I actually also was in a discussion with Marlena from Environmental Health, and she explained that she had gone through all the steps to make sure that, yes, they were, you know, that they could drill wells, so I did contact, I believe her name is Doris Autry, and discussed it with her, and she seemed, I think she really just wanted to vent, and I think she was satisfied with venting, and she said, "I appreciate the call, and if I hadn't heard from you, I was going to take it to the board." Not me particularly, but someone. So, I, I think that's been laid to rest as far as the, the person who addressed that issue.
And I don't think we should get too much into the issue without it being on the agenda, but I think that this commission has had some concern about water in Redwood Valley, but we are bound by our procedures, so... Okay, anything else?
So, should we hang on to these, or are we going to get a version again after Matt has had a chance to review them?
You will get another version. Hang on to your current, which you probably already have, so if you hang on to that, and then you'll get an updated draft.
Okay, great. All right, then it looks like we're ready for an adjournment. Do we have a motion? Sum up. Commissioner Ova moves.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hope Camp, and those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So, the meeting's adjourned.